I'd like to call the order, a special meeting for Lafayette Township Board of Trustees in Fire District. Today's Thursday, October ninth, it's nine fifteen AM. The notice requirements of section one twenty-one point twenty-two of the Ohio Revised Code and the implementing rules adopted by the board pursuant thereto were complied with for this meeting. Roll call.
Paroli here.
O'Neil here.
Fullerton here. We can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minor syntax area here, I guess. The supplemental appropriations is for the Fire District and not and the Township, but just for the Fire District though. Sorry for the confusion there. We want to start with that one. I know Sherry said that we were upping it by eighteen thousand thirteen was the.
The server stuff.
The server and then the five was for the HVAC compressor.
Okay.
And so she just combined them.
So the new, the new total is one million five hundred and six thousand thirty-four dollars.
And then she did put the attachment on to that resolution as well, so.
I don't have any additional discussion questions on it.
Okay, motion to adopt.
What do you think for the resolution number on it, it's still ten?
Ten.
Okay, so I would make the motion to approve resolution number ten twenty twenty-five FD, amending the appropriations in the general fund for expenditure during the fiscal year December thirty-one twenty twenty-five and declaring emergency.
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
Paroli, yes.
O'Neil, yes.
Fullerton, yes. Resolution ten FD adopted. Okay, the warrants, okay, good, she, we brought them here, everyone had a chance to look at all of them. Any discussion on any of them?
No, I mean, everything looked, looked like they were in order. I know we're catching up on, you know, some bills that were, were behind, but it looked like Sherry's getting a better handle on that.
I almost think, I'm actually glad you said that because it just came to mind, I almost think that some of the older vendors were emailing to another email address, I don't know if that's right or not, but I almost think that that may be a case, so I think some of this, I mean, once we get into these hard times, it should start smoothing out, but because like some of those old ones you had brought up the other day, it's like, what in the?
Well, then we had the audit. Yeah, the fee for the audit that was from April, you know, and then I know I've talked to chief about, you know, the Fire District, some of the invoices go down to the admin building and some come up here and he's working to get all the vendors to send everything up here for that. You know, and again, bigger maybe discussion than this meeting, but like figuring out, like you said, like, do we need, what can we kind of put in as far as like maybe procedures for the department heads to make it easier for Sherry or whoever, you know, whoever's in that role to to not have things straggling or, you know, confusion and, you know, that's a conversation we can each probably have individually with Sherry as far as like, you know, what her expecta- like, what would make it easier for her and then we can come up with something to say, hey, this is the process, right, have, have everything in by this time so that she can prep the warrants like she did here and then we've got a day or two to be able to review them before meeting and then approve it. That way there isn't this lag time of.
Right.
Getting them out.
Previously the fiscal officer wanted everything sent to the admin, all invoices and everything, but and I guess that's largely up to the fiscal officer for their convenience, Sherry may think otherwise, but I, I like it when, when A, chief can.
Well, he should.
Exactly.
Yeah, he should be seeing it because.
CD initials, everything.
Yep, well, and he knows, he knows significantly better just because he, he's doing it on a day-to-day, right, like, the fiscal officer is never gonna be able to, well, I shouldn't say never, but it, it's not a fair ask for them to be able to look at an invoice and go, well, yeah, we definitely got this and this is cr- you know, I mean, like, chief should be reviewing that, just like with the Service Department. You want Rick reviewing all of the invoices because he knows, you know, he, he can verify that we're actually being billed for what we got. Um, so he signs off on them and then to her, so.
And don't forget too, I mean, some vendors actually mail invoices and some of them.
Email them and, yeah.
So as long as fiscal's tagged, but I mean, but I would still want it printed and signed and approved.
Agreed. Okay, but yeah, so as it stands, I will make a motion to approve the warrants.
Roll call, but more on that. And it goes along with warrants and another part of the reason we had this meeting was for the appropriations for the server equipment, but talked to KGC and they, they are gonna want payment upfront on it, so. We approved the purchase of it. We've unfortunately had a history of late payments with them over the years.
Well, that's a big purchase too.
How much of it is hardware, I mean, I know that they just gave us like an all-in quote, you know? I mean, I can see, I can see.
Honestly, I asked him, what about half, and he's like, we're, we're not making much on this and, and there's a lot of outside vendors involved as well, so you're gonna need to pay them.
Outside, but, I mean, the hardware, he's gotta purchase the hardware, right, what other outside vendors are there?
I don't know if he's gonna have anybody else aiding with installation or not, but.
When is the licensing fee, when the, he has to pay for that right away?
I don't know.
And what's the time, when, when, when would the install be, I mean?
He said he's gonna get going as soon as, as soon as he can come pick a check up. And I told him we were meeting this morning, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's one of those one-off type of things, I don't, normally not asked that too often.
Right.
I can, I can, I can understand, you know, I'm a small business owner, I assume some purchases are pretty darn big.
Well, that's why I like, I, I think my, my only take on it is, I mean, I, I don't see the issue with, you know, fronting the hardware, like the stuff that he's basically buying to install, but I, I don't know that it's a precedent that we want to set as far as like paying for the serv- like his insta- you know what I mean, like, we wouldn't pay any other vendor for work before they do it.
I would agree. Although setting the precedent, this is not necessarily a policy or something, this is, this is a decision for the specific, you know, issue.
Yeah, I, I don't think I'd have an issue with it, but certainly not gonna make a run for it.
No, I, I would agree, and time is of the essence.
Oh, gosh. Yes, we, I think we can all agree with that. Yeah, I don't. I think it would be okay this time. Myself.
None of us love it. Right, I was gonna say, I've, I've stated my concerns over, not, not really concerns, that's not fair, because it's not that I don't think he'll, he'll do it or he'll get it installed, it's just, you know.
It's a concern, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, 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 I, I get it.
I mean, I don't know if we need to make a motion on that.
Well, we've already approved the purchase, um, if she's gonna issue a check, we'll just, we're, we're acknowledging we're including that within the warrants that are, that are being done.
Yeah, yeah, okay, uh, did anyone second the warrants?
No.
No?
I'll second.
All those in favor, huh?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Village of Chipwall contract.
Did you guys have a chance to review this, but you didn't still that sent it to me. Oh, what's right there, I'm sorry. I didn't see it with the credence, it, it was all stuff, are you sure it was in there?
Yeah, it was in there, yeah.
I thought you were gonna email it to me.
To be honest with you. Is that in there?
It should be.
I brought it, is this it?
No. It was in there this morning. You sure? Like I said, I mean, I thought.
In fact, we all inadvertently signed it the other day, so, with the signature pages.
There isn't, oh, so it's ju- this is the whole thing?
That's the whole thing.
Gotcha.
It won't take that long, you can read it, it's just, it's nothing.
Well, no, I, I, I thought there was a, I thought there was a second document, separate document that went with this.
No, we're just gonna go and, assuming we pass this this morning, I'll take it down there.
Alright, well then, yeah, I did. I read that, I thought, I thought the way that you would reference it, there was a, like a separate contract that went with that, so, fine, nope, then we're good.
Okay, I will make the motion to approve resolution number sixteen two thousand twenty-five for the agreement for services with Lafayette Township Service Department and Village of Chipwall Lake.
I will second.
Roll call vote.
Paroli, yes.
O'Neil, yes.
Fullerton, yes. And then you'll get that down to council?
Yeah, I'll take it down to Chipwall.
Okay, good, good, okay, and then the next, I, I added it, well, I mean, we were just brought up the other day, so I think it's worthy of a discussion, you know, in a public forum to, to discuss what the county commissioners are interested in doing. It's called the Medina County Homestead Expansion. I did talk with the commissioner yesterday just to get their thoughts of what they're doing. They're trying to roll back money in, in a homestead expansion to help relieve some of the taxes towards, mainly directed towards seniors, veterans and hold on a second here. Proper verbiage. And people that need some extra help, so. They reached out to all the townships and other governments to see what the opinions are, so I just figured we would, you know, at least talk about it today and if we want to have another special meeting about it. Uh, because there is a deadline, they have to meet a certain deadline to make it in effect for next year, so that's why they're kind of pushing on it. But their two objectives was the obvious need for meaningful property tax relief, particularly for our most financially vulnerable citizens and the continuing need to provide necessary beneficial local government services to all of our citizens. Your guys' thoughts on what they sent, I know they sent a spreadsheet with the, the dollar amounts. I, we're still gonna have a windfall and I know we talked the last meeting, I think we're probably all in agreement that we want to do something with that windfall.
Right.
So. But your guys' thoughts on that?
But if I'm reading this correctly, it's going to be this, this homestead expansion is going to reduce the windfall we would get, however, it's going to be serving the same purpose, it's going to go to more of a targeted group of residents, is that how you see it?
Yeah, that's, that's how I see it, and I guess, you know, my take on it is simply, you know, any, any reduction in property tax, I think is a good thing. I do think that, you know, assuming that we're going to continue our discussion on how to allocate that increase in inside village, I would prefer to see it stay intact with what we're getting and allow us to share the benefit of the reduction across all of the taxpayers in Lafayette versus, you know, this which is, again, just becomes a little more targeted, right? And, you know, it, it definitely not that the homestead exemption is a, a bad program, not saying that in any way, shape or form, but it's, you know, it's kind of just the whole, we're, it makes a lot of assumptions that it's just a certain demographic that needs the relief and I think we're kind of past the point with the way property taxes have increased where it's just that demographic that needs relief, I think everybody does, so. Again, I, I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing, but I think I would rather see them leave our increase alone on the inside village and allow us to decide, you know, because we talked about different things, right, we can roll back the police levy poten- potentially and, and every homeowner in Lafayette gets that, because, because every homeowner is facing the increase, so, you know, this kind of disproportionately allocates the, the reduction, that's my only concern.
It does to that number, but my opinion and my thought, you know, I had one day to think about it because I just sent it two days ago, right? But my thought was, let's do both.
Well, and we can't, because you're right.
We can take money out of road and bridge and put more into the general fund and, and we're gonna, we, we, we need to take a haircut for the second, there's just no doubt about it, and I think we actually can do both.
And it's only talking, I mean, what they're proposing, if I'm reading their spreadsheet correctly, I mean, we're talking about a twenty-five thousand dollar, like if they were to implement the increase to the homestead reduction that they're planning on doing, we would lose about twenty-five thousand dollars in inside village, right? Are you both reading it the same way?
From, from the reallocation.
Right, 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 not down from last year, but less than what we're expecting in the increase.
It's that windfall.
Correct.
Windfall, yeah.
So, so it's not like it would make, we, we can still, we can still do a lot of the things that we were talking about.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's just a matter of, it's just a matter of like, if, if they don't do this, we keep full control of where we allocate the reduction within our township, if, if, if they implement this, then, you know, then, then it's a county-wide decision, which, again, neither one is bad, you know, they both wind up being property tax reductions for our, our residents, it's just a matter of how we allocate them, right? Is it through the homestead program or do we do it across the board way?
Well, I, what, you know, I'm sorry.
No, I, I just want you guys to realize, they've got our, for Lafayette Township, they've got only our general fund inside village.
Correct.
Right, so, so it'll, so it'll be triple that basically.
Yeah, exactly, triple that would be.
So that's, that's a good, thank you for catching that, you're right, so we would lose a total of about seventy-five thousand dollars.
Right, but when I say do both, I would, I would take some of that road and bridge, put it in general fund and still try to use that same amount that we talked about last week and do both, I think we need to help the people that seriously, seriously need help, but we need to help everybody too, right? So, I mean, not to try to say one for anything, but I, I really honestly think road and bridge is pretty hefty, we got a good carryover and, I mean, we're managing that very, very well. And, you know, this, this right here, just so everyone understands, this is a one-year deal, next year they gotta redo the whole thing over again, so we're talking about one year. And that's not gonna be a huge haircut for us to pull somehow a road and bridge and put it in general fund and try to pace some of that stuff down that we had talked about previously.
We would, we would have to do another move like we did last year and reallocate, we need the millage coming in.
Yeah, and that's not hard to do.
No, we can do, get it down to pretty much the exact amount of, of the windfall minus.
Well, you know what I'm gonna say, I mean, I think we should just put it all in the general and then have the flexibility to, to budget however we want, but, you know, that's another conversation.
No, I, in, in, in my thought process, I remember you saying that, so I mean, this, I think was kind of thinking that everyone might be on the same page with that.
So what are, I mean, if I read the, the email correctly from the county, they're really just looking like, do we wanna?
Do we support their position or don't we support their position, that's what they're looking for.
I, I don't know, I don't know what your guys' thoughts are, I mean, I, I kind of, like I said, I definitely don't want to say that I'm opposed to it, but at the same time, I do like the idea of like, our residents elected us to make decisions for them and this is not, I mean, not that the county, like, they elect the county commissioners as well, but, you know, the county commissioners balance the needs of the entire county, whereas, you know, we just look out for our residents. If it was my choice alone, I would say leave the homestead alone and let us do our thing, but I also don't tell them not to do it either, so I, I'll kind of defer to what you guys, what your thoughts are there.
If we do, just, if we have some favorable for the board in, in, in agreeing with them, that we would need to make another special meeting because we need to put it in a resolution to send back to them, I think they wanted it back by the twentieth.
Does it have to be a resolution?
I think they were just looking for feedback, right?
They gave them a, a, a letter just stating our position on it.
Yeah, and I, and I'm perfectly fine, you know, authorizing, you know, either one of you or, you know, agreeing that like, you know, we're not opposed to it, but at the same time, we do see the value of leaving the leaving the decision up to the individual entities, you know, because, you know, Homer Township might have a totally different need for that money, I mean, there might be some townships that have run their budgets really, really, really tight and they actually need the inside village for something, you know what I mean, and on top of it, you know, I guess the other thing that I think about is, you know, the homestead reduction, right? Like, are we, are we sure that if the town, if the county you know, allocates this money instead of doing for inside village, if they allocate that money to the homestead reduction? Do we know that every one of those dollars that was gonna come to Lafayette Township will be used for homestead reductions in Lafayette Township?
That's what they're saying.
Because that's the only thing that.
And the schools don't keep in, I mean, not, but the schools are taking major cuts.
No, no, I, I get that, um, but I guess what I'm saying is, I don't know how they would I don't know how they would guarantee, you know, like you said, right, like, our inside village total is gonna take a haircut of about, just under seventy-five thousand dollars.
Correct.
Is every one of those seventy-five thousand dollars of less tax revenue that's being paid gonna be less that's being paid by our residents?
Our residents.
I don't think anybody who's eligible for the.
Countywide though, could tap into that pool, so.
Well, no, I don't think so.
I think it says they'll be collecting less from, from each.
Right, right, that's eligible under the homesteading, okay, but did they go through, is that how they calculated these numbers, is, is, because they do, I didn't know if it was like a flat percentage.
Yeah, because you can see it's, a lot of the communities are way different.
Well, yeah, a lot of them are way bigger, but yeah, no, you're right, like, there are significant differences, okay, um, yeah, I mean, that would be one of the only other things.
Yeah, so now that you bring that up, uh, it, it, it wouldn't be triple, would it, then? Because if those are based just on.
Well, I don't know, it says general fund and our, because it does say, it does say Lafayette Township, um, the general fund difference is forty-one nine. Well, actually, yeah, because see, look, it, our general fund is three oh eight, if you look at the inside village paperwork, the, if you look at.
It'd be like three oh one, three sixty-five hundred, wasn't it?
Yeah, our, here, hold on, I do have this. Our inside village for next year is projected to be three fifty for the, for, for general, but inside village is also, we, we put two point oh to road bridge, so six thirty-one. It, so our inside village total is nine hundred and eighty, nine hundred and eighty-one six. So, if we take a, they're talking about, yeah, because on this spreadsheet, it's only the three.
I don't think these are, are, are changing, like, I think these are probably calculated and they're just, they're subtracting this from from what they're assuming is all of our inside village, you know what I'm saying?
No, just what we have allocated in the general fund, because like if you look, this three, see, and then, then the column where it says estimated general fund inside, they're using the three fifty-six, which is this column right here. So if we were to reallocate.
These would be triple.
They would triple, yeah.
Correct, yep.
So I don't know if that means that they are, if they only take that from the general fund?
Well, when I spoke with, with the commissioners yesterday, they were not aware that we had inside village being funneled to.
To road bridge, yeah.
Or any other fund, and I don't know of any other township, I would assume there's.
There's gotta be some that do it that way, but, but I, I do know that there's a good number of them that just, everything goes to general.
Right, right.
Yeah, so. Yeah, I don't know, I mean, I, I'm perfectly fine if we want to send a response to them that like, we're not, I, I think we would probably sit the fence on this opinion, right, like, it's like, you know, we're not gonna like throw a fit if you do it, it, it's a solid program, but I, I do like the idea of us having and just, we're giving up a little bit of flexibility on our additional money as to where it, you know, who, how we allocate that inside village, where they would keep it and generate less revenue for the township and then the county would kind of allocate where it goes. And then whereas if it, if we don't, if they don't implement this plan, then we have more flexibility on where that money goes, but it does probably make sense that they would have calculated the homes, like based off of the actual parcels, like how many parcels we currently have, because they've got all that data, right? Like, they, they know who's, who's got homestead reductions and, and what those percentages are, so, um, especially since the numbers are so varying, I, I would imagine though that'll still, even if they do this, the tax reductions will still benefit our residents.
Right.
Either way, so.
Right, but you had brought up the other day, you know, one hundred and sixty-ish or something, right?
Right.
And then what I was thinking, well, if we had to take a seventy-five thousand dollar hit to do this homestead, I would supplement that seventy-five to put onto one sixty, just so we can give everyone that relief that we've already been talking about. And I think we can afford that haircut, for sure.
Look, lower property taxes is good, that's, that's legitimate, so.
Right, that's exactly correct.
And they are trying to do something which is definitely positive.
Right.
Like I said, I just, as usual, there's pros and cons to both. So I don't know that we necessarily want to take a real strong, and, and, and then if you both disagree, that's fine, like, we, we can do that. If, if you're both of a different opinion that we should, that the township should advocate support for this, then, then we can, but I just personally feel that it's, you know, hey, that's why they get elected, it's, it's their decision to make, I don't want to really argue one way or another.
Yeah. And I keep revisiting this, and I'm still not convinced that it, it, these would triple.
Oh, I am.
Are you?
Yes, absolutely, because it's all just general fund money.
Yeah, but they, well, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, but our inside village goes to road and bridges as well.
Yeah, two, two of the three mills.
But is there any proof that these two columns are calculated?
Which one here, the homestead reimbursements?
Yeah. I don't know if they're on the Schedule Bs or not.
I've never looked that deep into the Schedule B to see if the homestead reductions were on there. Well, I mean, I, you just usually look off the revenue totals, but.
I think they're just, they're reporting what they think are, are inside villages.
Right, but doesn't the homestead, the homestead reduction applies to all property taxes, it's not just inside village only? Well, maybe it is because devoted levies.
Yeah, they don't.
But if it's inside village, it would still, it still would matter whether it was general fund or road and bridge, it would still be the reduction on that, so, you know, again, it's a, it's a valid question, I, I wouldn't say I'm a hundred percent, but I'm like ninety-eight percent certain that those numbers were triple.
Yeah, and I would agree with that.
And there's nothing, there's nothing on the Schedule Bs that show what the actual reductions are to verify those numbers. Not that I think any of us are, you know, doubting them, it's just, yeah.
And they are, well. They're taking, taking from the fire and rescue districts as well, if you, if you look on the other side.
Well, they haven't, they have no inside village.
And, and it's still.
Interesting, yeah.
All this, all five.
And that's why I say, I, I, I think.
So it does, it does apply, the sort of homestead exemption does apply to every levy regardless of whether it's inside village or not, if, because it says right here that those districts have no inside mill, but, you know.
They're still gonna allow them to take a reduction on their, on their taxes.
It's interesting though, because if the levies are set to, all of those levies are set to collect a certain dollar amount, does that mean then that that's just gonna basically shift? You know what I mean, like, we passed the levy, they set the village every year to collect the six hundred and forty, whatever it is, so if they give somebody a reduction, somebody else is picking it up based on the allocation of valuations, because I wouldn't imagine that we're just giving up that, that revenue.
Might be.
Yeah.
Interesting, but, but when I look at that, at the fire and rescue districts, it makes me think that we wouldn't triple on the side, because they're not making any, these calculations appear just to be made from, directly from the, the tax bill for each parcel.
Yeah, but those numbers are a good amount bigger.
Yeah, it's showing that we'll, we'll lose sixty percent of our, what would be our windfall, but I don't think that's the case, because I, I don't think.
Yeah, but we know our, we know that the general fund inside, well, because it's general fund inside difference, we know. I don't know. I don't know how that doesn't affect road and bridge unless the homestead, for whatever reason, the homestead only affects general fund, but I, I don't think that's the case.
I don't think that's the case.
I think they just didn't.
I think they just thought that, they didn't think that there might be other funds receiving inside.
Right, so, so I do, like, goes back to the argument for three times, I, I don't know, I guess when you start looking at that and you realize like how many of these different, you know, fire districts and, and stuff like that, that are, they're gonna be losing revenue. I mean, they're not necessarily huge numbers for most of them, but, but at the same. Fire districts and, and stuff like that, that are, they're gonna be losing revenue, I mean, they're not necessarily huge numbers for most of them, but, but at the same time, it's kinda like. You know, that, that, that kinda leans towards the whole. Oh, wait, those are negative numbers, does that mean they're actually getting, they're getting?
I look at that as though we are going to be.
Well, right, so less reduction, we're losing twenty-four thousand, but it's listed as a positive number, so are these numbers that are listed as negatives actually increases? Well, right. This spreadsheet. We, it, less homestead reduction, we're losing twenty-four seven.
No, we're, we're still gaining because we have more windfall coming in, they're wanting to.
Oh, I see what you're saying, that's what's left after the fact.
So we still will have extra money.
That's what's left after the fact.
So, so the township isn't taken, didn't get hit, but the district got hit.
District will get hit, I mean, we'll be collecting, yeah, you know, that almost leads me back to my whole. We, you should leave it up to the district, like, you know what I mean, like, all of those, all of these other entities, all of the school districts, all of the fire districts, all of the. You know, townships, everybody's got the ability to adjust their tax rates for their residents and what makes sense for their budgets. This kinda leads me towards telling the county, like, you should leave it up to the local, I, I like what they're trying to do in reducing property taxes, but. Every, like. We have enough, we have enough on our plate managing our own budgets and, and, and making sure that we're doing what's right for our, our residents, like, do we really wanna try to, like. Way in on what, what's good for Montville or Medina or York or, you know, any of the other townships, I mean.
Right.
They may not have, they may not have the additional levies or, you know, the ability, they, they may not have the room in their budget to. To do the things that we can do, right?
Now, you look at our, our fire districts, it's, it's, it's not quite the same, but we weren't subject to getting any money from our district.
Hold that too, like. Right, no, and now we're.
But their remedy is gonna, is gonna cause us to lose money from that amount.
Well, yeah, the, the Medina County District Library would lose ninety, ninety thousand dollars, I mean. Can they take that hit, can they, I, I, I don't know, I don't know anything about their budget.
No, no, I, yeah, nor do I, but yeah, some, some people are taking some serious, it's like I said, the schools are.
The Career Center, a hundred and eighty-two, a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, I mean. Yeah, I, I don't know, maybe we just don't weigh in either way and let them make their decision. Cause I don't wanna, you know what I mean, like, I don't wanna tell them it's a bad idea, it's, it's a property tax reduction. That, that in itself is good, but. You know, allocating good benefits from the reduction is always a fun game to try to play, right? And our job is to, our residents, not the county or any of the other entities, so. I'd say we probably just don't respond, I don't know, what do you, what do you guys think?
What do you think, Chris?
I don't know if that's even possible, but I'd like to respond and say that, yeah, we support the idea of, of trying to do something, we like the, the, the thought process.
Yeah, no, and that's fair, I think we all agree on that.
But I think they need to know that we are already discussing how we're going to help our residents, so.
And I'm assuming the other, all of these other entities are probably doing the same thing as well, so, so maybe we do kinda take a non-committal approach, like, we love the idea, we, 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 we love that you're. We love that, that, like Chris said, right, we love the thought process, we love the fact that you're considering how to reduce taxes on our prop, or, but, but maybe it's. Maybe there is some value in leaving it up to the local entities to determine what's best for, for each. Each taxing district, and just kinda leave it there, kind of a non-committal.
Or, or maybe we, we submit two responses, one from the fire district and one from the township.
Can do that too. You're right, cause it, it is a, it's, it's a completely different impact. You know, um, I think the township has a lot more flexibility in their budget. Than, than what the fire district has, so, yeah.
But, you know, they're, they're bound by law too, what they can do, what they can't, and then who they can hit, who they can't hit.
Right.
I think, and then that's where all those fire districts get hit, because it's all the levies.
So I think a long conversation to come to the conclusion, we don't have a great conclusion, but.
No, but I mean, it's still, we're kind of a distinction, because I think we're all on the same page, that we, we're gonna do something. Um, what that something is, we're not sure yet, but.
Wouldn't they want a response by? I believe it was.
The twentieth?
Okay, so we don't have anything scheduled before then, um. I think we've, I think it, we're, we're all on the same page with kinda what the.
I would, my preference would be to submit two separate responses.
I'm good with that.
And, and respond with the township, it, it's a, we like the idea, uh, it gives the relief. A to some of the most vulnerable, but not all the relief, and we can still do more on our end of it, fire district, uh, I'm not for it, I mean, it's.
Okay.
Imagine if the levy didn't pass last year, we'd be even, and more.
Right, this budget would be even tighter, yeah.
No, I, I would, I would approve, uh, that letter, and if you wanna type it up to, to, to represent that comment, then, then I'm good with it.
Yeah, I mean, who wants to take point on what, cause I, I can work with chief on the fire districts, um, if you want, and then. Yeah, I'll, I'll take it on, cause I think it makes sense to the, to have Chief Cavan on time, you know, as a representative of the fire district, he'll be back on Monday.
Okay. And what, I mean, oh, two, oh, then I'm, okay, alright, so we have time, yeah, okay, now, do we all three wanna sign, uh. That letter?
Yeah, but I, I think if we are all in agreement, it's perfectly fine, you know, for based on what we discussed today to draft those letters, and then when it's time to send it out, we can all sign it, we don't need to. Approve the letter at a meeting, I don't think.
No, I don't think so either, okay, good, awesome, alright, anything else with that, uh?
No, I think that covered.
Okay, so I'm just gonna write two letters just for my own notes.
Who's taking lead on the, you wanna do the township's?
Okay, alright, awesome, alright, uh, that's it for the business, um, motion to adjourn?
I will move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nine fifty-one.